Good evening, I'd like to call the Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. It is Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn.
Here.
DeWitt.
Herzog.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Selagi.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
We have forum.
Thank you. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Dr. Davis, if you could do the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'uchuk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shore of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. And next, we have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is that Wright, Carolyn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Herzog.
Hi.
Kearns.
Can I remove something?
Discussion.
Sure.
Okay. I'd like number eight moves to individually considered resolutions, due to that being a potential conflict of interest and it will abstain from voting on that one.
Thank you.
All right. I'll second that.
All right. Herzog.
Hi.
Kearns.
Hi.
Selagi.
Hi.
Wright.
Hi.
Wyman.
Hi.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Okay. First of all, we have the Board President's Report. There's a retirement that I would like to acknowledge, and that's Karine Ingeman. And she's a testing center paraprofessional at Oshkosh North High School, and she's been with the district since 2005. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add about Karine? Okay. Thank you. We wish Karine well. Yes, and congratulations. Enjoy the summer weather and all the summers beyond. Thank you for your service. Okay. The next item is Welcome Back Convocation. We had the most marvelous convocation for all of the teachers this morning. It was enthusiastic, it was poignant, it was heartfelt, and it was strategic in that it fits into what we need to do in our district. I'd just like to, I have a half-page of some of the things that Dr. Davis talked about today during convocation, and I'd just like to kind of go on the record for all the people at home to understand what the day consisted of. And this messaging from Dr. Davis was contagiously enthusiastic, and I think it was felt by everyone in the room. He talked about leading through engagement, through how to be a leader, the ability of an individual to influence other people. And engagement, the involvement, enthusiasm and activity, but also noted that individuals are responsible for their own engagement, and good leaders create conditions for increased engagements. And I think that was one thing that was really taken well by all of the staff, incoming and veteran staff, that you have to be responsible for your own engagement. He also talked about bringing our best selves, that you want to be the best so that when events happen, and they will, you will be in the mindset that you will be able to react appropriately, so the end result has a positive outcome. And to believe that you are enough, to take care of yourself through exercise, sleep, play, and nutrition, and balance your work-life with your family life, so you can be the best teacher or support staff that you can possibly be. And always try to clarify what you need from others. Be present, be optimistic, be realistic, stop talking, and start doing. And that was the message from this morning. We then heard the most wonderful solo and story from Dr. Fong Niggin, who is the Vell Phillips Middle School Choir Director. His rendition of "You Lift Me Up" was inspirational. He came from a background from Vietnam, where he came here with pretty much nothing, and he talked about what mentors meant to him along the way, and how each teacher sitting in that room was a mentor to someone, and always to be knowledgeable of that fact and understand that someone is always looking to you. It was very fitting, and it was a very inspirational end to convocation. Those are my notes. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
I thought it was a great morning. There was a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm. It was great to see all the T-shirts identify what schools or what departments people came from, and just a very positive uplifting morning.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's Report.
All right. So, a lot of things going on, obviously a busy time of year. So, last week, we welcomed our new teaching staff into the district. As our new team members arrived on day two of their orientation and training, they were welcomed by our school and district leaders with smiles, high-fives, applause, cheers, and music. We did not bring the confetti cannons out, but we're looking at maybe doing that next year. So, this annual teacher clap-in was an incredible tradition to be part of. Our staff truly are rock stars, and we look forward to a great year ahead with them. As was mentioned, we had our convocation this morning, so you can see some of those pictures. So, always great just to be together again after a long summer apart, and had some great energy in the room. The theme was Leading Through Engagement. Staff are inspired to be their best selves. So, I just want to thank everybody for their engagement, not only during the convocation, but we had some really productive professional development sessions immediately after that. So, it's a great energy to be able to get the week kicked off. So, speaking of that, we had some collaboration the next two weeks, so the rest of, let's see, this week and then next week, we've got professional development all across the system. So, today, we had departments and grade levels getting together across our entire system, and back in our buildings, and we have some of that back-and-forth rhythm until we get students on the first day, on September 1st. As you can see, it's certainly a busy and exciting time in the early learning team. They recently gathered for an all-staff meeting. These incredible educators and staff serve our youngest learners and support our district in big and amazing ways to kick off the year. The team spent time making connections with one another, reflecting on the importance of supporting each other through a fun rendition of "Lean on Me." Our department has also recently gathered to engage in some brainstorming and professional development. Again, it's incredible to see the brilliance of our staff and the collective positive impact they can be, and it looks like Dr. Coleman might be on a desk there, which we should not tell Drew about, because that's not good for our moderate as we're moving forward. Our school secretary staff recently reunited for the summer and had their professional development day this year to welcome new staff and create relationships. The team went on a citywide scavenger hunt, made possible with the help of Cobus and Buses, who drove our teams around the town for clues. So, it's a great way to have some fun together, but also to learn about Oshkosh, and many people are new to the city. So, thanks for Cobus and that partnership. So, we have fall sports kicking off. So, tonight, we're just taking a look at some of the examples from Oshkosh North that we have. Athletics are in full swing. It's great to see students be involved in our school community. So, we have examples from the Spartan Girls Golf Team and the Spartan Football Team, and just a great opportunity for students to get in the rhythm of school and to have friendships prior to school. So, thank you to all the volunteers and coaches for your time spent in the heat of the summer. We also love seeing the incredible impact our students will make after they leave our classrooms. Recent Oshkosh West graduate Nate Zander is a great example. Nate's journey as a student included being part of our outstanding transitional program, where he gained valuable working experience at the Wildcat Cafe, brewing Future Struck, and interned in our maintenance department. Nate was recently hired to serve as Oshkosh West's new second-shift custodian. His transition from a Wildcat student to staff member reflects the exceptional qualities and dedication, making him a valuable asset to the team. So, great job and congratulations to Nate. Last week, over 100 women and girls rolled up their sleeves for Reed Elementary's Playground Platoon, the Women's Build. The school is building a new destination playground that is a unique volunteer event, sponsored by the Women's Fund of Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, helped to get the playground area and school ready. During the event, volunteers helped with playground projects to make the inside and outside of the school more welcoming for all of our students and staff, including painting, building, planting, cleaning, and organizing. Some eye-catching additions to the school include the new Candy Land-themed recess game and the Reed Rockets fence design. We can't wait for the playground installation to occur in September. So, thank you for everybody that came out to help support. Vell Phillips Middle School is on the move. Staff members are busy getting classroom and spaces set up. The custodial crew is working hard, and our construction partners are putting the finishing touches on. There's a lot of moving pieces at this point, but we're excited to be able to be ready to welcome our kids to this amazing space, and we will be ready to move kids in on September Just a reminder to the community, we have an exciting event coming up, our entire community, for the public dedication ceremony and open house of our brand-new Vell Phillips Middle School on Sunday, September 17th at 4:00 p.m. The event will feature a brief dedication ceremony and self-guided tours. I also have a teaser for this event at the very end of my slideshow right here, so just a little bit more on that. And, let's see, can we get some sound for that?
Hold on.
Three, two, one.
All right. So, that was the Instagram version of our groundbreaking for Menominee Elementary that we had just yesterday. As I mentioned, at the start of the meeting, it's an honor to come together to celebrate our community, and Menominee Elementary groundbreaking was another example of that. As a school district, we're so grateful to be part of the community that values public education and the well-being of its students. Menominee Elementary School is a testament to what it means to put students first, prioritizing our district's commitment to equitable resources, and is another milestone as we build our future together. So, thank you to everybody that came out. I know footings are being poured, and we'll have walls going up within, I think, the next three weeks. So, exciting work to be ready to go. That school will be ready to go for next fall at the beginning of the year. So, we've got about an 11-month build. Looking forward to that. Busy times again, and thank you for everybody for having me out in the community. As we finish up this prep for 2324, it's been great to be able to welcome some people back and be able to just reconnect as we're moving forward. So, thank you for that. And finally, I wanted the community to have an opportunity. Our staff was able to see this video regarding Vell Phillips during our convocation, and just wanted to provide the community with an opportunity to see this teaser video for our opening house that's coming up.
One, two, three.
When I started this journey, I began by meeting with staff members across all roles and asking them the same simple question. What makes this school community so special? And after each meeting, I started to realize that what they were telling me was really consistent. I come here every day because I see our kids here, and our kids matter, and that's what brings me back every day. Through their stories, I learned so much about how brilliant our kids are, and how passionate they are, and how many of our kids are resilient beyond measure, and that they are kind, and that they are caring. And best of all, I learned how witty our kids are, and how funny they can be, and how often they make us smile. This new school will affect us in many ways. Robles is extremely brilliant woman, and she inspires many souls. I, as many of you, are very excited to see how this new, excellent school will affect our minds and help us build those opportunities.
Like, the classrooms, I mean, like, the classrooms, you know, full of desks, right? Nine o'clock in my head, so excited for that.
And stairs.
Yeah, I can't see downstairs.
The stairs, they're actually really.
To see that our schools can get a better place.
When I think about the opportunities that this provides us, and what it will mean to us and to our students to open Vell Phillips, I don't just see a better building. I see a symbol that our community is finally saying the same things that our teachers have been saying about our kids for years. I see you, and you matter here. Thank you to the community from the bottom of our hearts. This is going to be something that will change what education looks like for our students, and for Oshkosh, and for our entire community for many years to come, and just the beginning of so many new and exciting things.
All right. So, again, that was shown at convocation, so just wanted to be able to share that with the community, and thank you to Katie Neiman for the production credit for that video. So, thank you. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you. Very nicely done. Ms. Conrad, verbal report from the August 9th Board Listening Session.
Right. On the August 9th Listening Session, we had seven community members who spoke. Three of the participants voiced concerns on the Go Transit bus pass requirement. Two participants spoke about the Washington Elementary property sale and gave feedback on what they would like to see in the sale criteria. One participant spoke on multiple topics, including how to improve schools, understanding what a school is for, more good news on schools is needed, and doing more publicity on 4K. Two community members spoke on the suspension data and wanted to know when true conversations were going to happen, and they are looking for a true exchange. Follow-up actions that occurred were 24 hours. We got more information on the Go Transit bus passes, and they were present at the back-to-school fair for both days, so that was great. And then, we set a date. We are actually meeting with Real Oshkosh on September 24th in the afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to have that conversation that they were requesting.
I'm wondering, is there any follow-up on doing more to market our 4K and kindergarten programs?
Yep, that is in process, so we did talk about that.
Thank you.
That's great. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we move to committee reports. First up is the Education Committee. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. We met on Thursday, August 3rd, and discussed two items. First one was Unit of Study for Writing for K-2. It was really presented by Linda Kuopt and Kim Brown, and we're talking about doing a field study for this program. A field study, just to clarify, is tried with all students within the district to determine impact on student outcomes, rather than a pilot study that is implemented with a subset of students. Kuopt feels the district will see a positive impact in a short time. Site-by-site results will be reviewed at the end of each writing unit of study, so any issues can be addressed immediately. I think the confidence level that this was going to make some substantial changes was high, and Ms. Wyman had requested that, you know, every so often, they kind of check back with the Education Committee to see how that's developing. So, more to come on that. The second part was discuss the Act 20 Literacy Bill. Dr. Davis, do you want me to read some highlights from this, or did you want to say anything instead?
Oh, you can read the highlights.
Okay. So, there was questions as that progressed, what that would mean for the district, so we put that on there, so we could talk through what that means. Dr. Davis said he doesn't feel like it will bring a huge change to our district, as we've been moving in the direction already, making good strides over the past year that will assist in being effective. And we are in a good position moving forward. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, we don't think it's going to have a big impact on us at all. We're going to have to make some changes to policy down the road by 2025, but it should not change a whole lot, so. Anything to add to that? Is that good?
No, I think that's good. And just for just some context, we've also made some significant changes over the last couple of years. So, I just want to make sure it's not coming across as like status quo. We've done some heavy lifting over the last couple of years. This bill allows us to be able to have some targets, to be able to shoot for, and just double down on the investments that we've made in phonics, phonemic awareness, letter identification at those primary literacy grades, to make sure that we can continue that work. This bill actually expects that across all systems across the state. So, I just want to make sure, again, I think it's reinforcing of the changes that we made.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
We, next meeting will be on September 7th. So, thank you.
I do have one question. Is the, so you said there's piloting the Units of Study Writing?
Yes.
Is that just an updated version? Because I thought, isn't that what we already had, was Units of Study Writing?
Can I bring in? Can I phone a friend?
Yeah. Dr. Brown, if you could come in.
I'm looking at you and her, like, I'm just being curious. I missed being on the Education Committee. It's my first year not on it.
You need to come join us again. So, it's a K-2 field study for the Units of Study for Writing. It is a substantial change in what it looks like. There is a very direct connection between the phonics, phonemic awareness, and writing throughout. So, it'll make those connections for teachers and students right in the curriculum, which we feel will be really beneficial to our teachers and then, of course, the students they serve. It also has grammar built in throughout the unit, instead of just at the end of the unit, which is how it is presently, so we think that will also have some positive benefits. And teachers are super excited about it, because the older units of study, there was a lot of reading in order to get ready, and this one is a little bit more set with some bullet points of some of the main ideas to just help support the teachers in planning. So, we're really excited about it, to see what happens, and yeah, we've got a lot of plans of what else we can do to help wrap around the writing this year, so tie it into reading. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kearns, anything else?
No, I was all done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Herzog, Facilities and Finance.
Thank you. Facilities and Finance met on Thursday, August 17th. We discussed four items. Mr. Nihon started us off talking about employee benefits, noting that there was a $3.3 million loss on the employee health plan that was experienced this past fiscal year. Suggestions were proposed on how to make up that loss without increasing premiums. Mr. Nihon has been in discussions with OEA and proposed the idea of expanding the Three-Waves Clinic and Wellness Center. The committee agreed that that was something that needed to be done, to upgrade the clinic not only for additional space, but also additional services. The recommendation is to move the clinic to a larger space to be able to add services as needed for maximum benefit. Mr. Nihon's also provided information on our second item, which was on the state budget, and our own budget, notably the increase of $6.5 million in revenue due to the revenue ceiling being raised to $11,000 per pupil. It was noted that the health insurance costs increased over $3 million from the most previous projections. Mr. Nihon's proposed providing a one-page document explaining what each of the funds are and how they are used. Also in this document, Mr. Nihon's would like to detail school vouchers and all that they entail, along with how vouchers affect the mill rate. We spent a little bit of time talking about the vouchers and wondered how many people in the community really understand that while the vouchers may be free to the student and their parents, they are not free to the taxpayers, and so that's a message we would like to convey. The third item was Wi-Fi hotspots on buses. Again, Mr. Nihon's led the discussion, noting that the current three-year contract is up with the school, let's see, is up with the school bus company, and that the new contract will include new cameras, which will have Wi-Fi available. This would help with the students working on schoolwork, going to and from events that take place after school hours. And finally, we talked about higher-level substitutes with Ms. Johnson from the HR Department. She provided information on current pay rates for substitute teachers and proposed increasing the pay, as well as eliminating a tiered system that has been used for a number of years, and will reach out to local school districts in the area to have a dialogue regarding the substitute teacher pay in neighboring districts and bring that information to an upcoming meeting. And with that, we adjourn the meeting, and we'll resume on September 14th at 7:30 a.m.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Davis is checking our board for anyone that wants to speak in public forum.
There isn't anyone. There is.
We have nobody.
And we have nobody this evening, so we will continue on. Next up is the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Barb. Second.
Herzog and Kearns.
Yes.
Call the roll.
Hi.
Selagi.
Hi.
Wright.
Hi.
Wyman.
Hi.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Herzog.
Hi.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the pulled agenda item, number eight, increase long-term substitute teacher rates and elimination of graduated pay rates after specific dates of service. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Selagi. Wright.
Any discussion? Okay. Call the roll.
Excuse me. I would just like to put in support for this. We know that nationwide, as well as statewide and locally, there's a severe shortage of substitute teachers, and this would help us to attract and retain quality substitute teachers willing to serve in our classrooms to benefit our students. So, I think this is a great idea, and I thank Sabrina Johnson for bringing it forward to Facilities and Finance. Thank you.
I agree. Just as important as it is to get quality teachers, it's important to get quality substitute teachers as well. And, I mean, everyone knows wages are going up everywhere, inflation is rampant, and as a district, we need to do what we can to make sure that our kids are getting, you know, the best quality services as we can provide, so.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Selagi.
Hi.
Wright.
Hi.
Wyman.
Hi.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Herzog.
Hi.
Kearns.
Present.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Request for future agenda items.
I want to go first.
Go first.
I go first every time. Okay. So, I was looking at some of our future agenda items, and I see an opportunity for some professional development for possibly the board as a whole. I don't, in the past, we've done key work of school boards with Ted Nitsky at CISA 6, and I think I'm proposing that we have some sort of workshop or something, where we review the roles and responsibilities of the school board, as opposed to, sometimes we say above the line and below the line, and I don't know if everybody has had that same training, or if they understand the red tie that's hanging on the wall. So, I just think it would be a good opportunity. I know it's creating work for us, but I think that, you know, whenever you have a new board, it's a good idea to kind of check in.
Yes. Good. Okay. Well, we can discuss that. That'd be great. Thank you very much. Anybody else, future agenda items? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I was reflecting on one of our workshop items from last time, that Dr. Coleman presented on. Coleman presented on suspension data. And it's been our practice, I think, going back to at least 2017, to have an annual report. But I'm wondering if it would make sense to have a written report update every quarter so that rather than going a full year and being concerned about the data, if we could have a more frequent monitoring as we do with the key performance indicators.
Would that be something that would be included in the key performance indicators?
Yes. Yeah, I think I can, let me take a look at that, take a look at the schedule. We do have some of the key performance indicators that are monitored quarterly. And so, yeah, we can take a look at that. I think as we're considering those reports, like it's important to like think about the why, right? You know, that as we would be bringing things forward, you know, that we could, that we would take a look at that. So, yeah, I can take a look at that.
All right. Marvelous. Anybody else? Okay. Announcements. First of all, we have Dr. Herzog, CISA Board of Controls.
Well, thank you. Just as the school year is kicking off for 421, excuse me, public school districts in the state of Wisconsin effective September 1st, CISA 6 Board of Control kicked off their year in August. And one of the things that the board there has been very concerned about is the services that are available to member districts because CISA 6 does operate as a cooperative. That's what the C stands for, and that means that all 39 districts in the CISA are members. And when there's a profit, that then is turned over to the members. But it's not in the form of cash. It's in the form of a credit or services that can be purchased. And the emphasis is on new services. And so to make that happen, they have to come up with new products and services, and they've been very entrepreneurial. I've got a couple of pages here of these if you are interested. One of the things that I thought was of great interest was having a K-12 tele-nursing project. They will be administering this statewide tele-nursing program, which will be funded by the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. They have some technology and audiovisual services they will be providing for the first time, School Counselors Collaborative, and a whole host of things. So they continue to expand their reach and their service within our service agencies. So I just wanted to share that. The Board of Control meets once a month, and that's the second Tuesday of every month of the CISA office. If any of you are interested in attending with me, you're welcome to do that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yes?
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yesterday was incredibly touching, and I had goosebumps with the groundbreaking of the new elementary school. And it was truly just a great feeling and a great opportunity for our community. And I just want to take a moment and reflect and thank the board that was in 2020 who worked on this referendum. I know that Bob Pechel was able to be there. But I'd also like to thank Allison Garner, Jim Evans, and Kelly Olmstead. As the community knows, we passed this referendum in 2020. So I think some people think that we just decided to build this school, but we didn't. And of course, I also just wanted to recognize Dr. Vicki Cartwright as well for her. And I know Dr. Davis mentioned her too. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
So just wanted to make a quick announcement and a recognition. The Wisconsin Music Educators Association recognizes a school board member each year who is an advocate for the importance of music education in school programs. As such, WMEA has established an award to celebrate individuals who are advocates to ensure all students receive a well-rounded education that includes music. And this year, Dr. Herzog has been selected as the 2023 WMEA Distinguished School Board Member. So I just wanted to say congratulations.
Congratulations. Very exciting. It's very humbling, and I am extremely grateful to Bridget Duffy Ulrich, who initiated the process, and Dr. Kiffmeyer, Mrs. Kiffmeyer, and others who wrote letters of support. So thank you. This is really not about me. It's about the effort that this board and this community have put into the arts and specifically music education. So I'm honored to represent you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dr. Herzog?
I just want to give a shout out to Jennifer Scholaske, the Reed School parent who organized the fundraising for the amazing playground, which is going to be installed at Reed School this fall, and for her ability to get roughly 100 women and girls from the community to put on T-shirts that say "The Playground Patrol," and Playground Platoon, rather, and make a positive difference in the culture and the climate of Reed Elementary School. So thank you, Jennifer, for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Okay, here are my hats off. And I try not to repeat when other board members say things, but I have to tonight. I also have Jennifer Scholaske on my list. It was a pretty marvelous day, even though I had to leave early. And the part that you maybe didn't know or didn't see before is the tremendous amount of fundraising she did prior to that day. Reed Playground would not be happening without her. She has done just a magnificent job, coordinated with so many companies, individuals, and really put her heart and soul into this. So thank you, Jennifer. I also wanted to say Menominee Elementary was absolutely fantastic. I talked to many community members there, and they weren't all from that neighborhood. These were community members that were so excited about what was happening and what we were doing as a district. And I just want to say thank you to the very, the large group that came out to see the groundbreaking at Menominee Elementary. I also have another one, and this is the Rec Department Bulletin that just graced our mailboxes, and it's a shout out to Cabal Helberg, who is the lead of the Rec Department and of this folder. And when we think about this, we think that these are just programs for kids. But when you look in here, the number of adult opportunities that are available are unbelievable, and these are all sponsored by the school district. So it is a community-wide effort for all ages. So thank you very much for that. I also wanted to do my last shout out, and this is to Jim Fox, Bray Architects, Myre Construction, for the opening of Vell Phillips, and all the work has been done. And now on to Menominee. We are so lucky to have them as partners, and we hope that Menominee turns out just as good as Vell Phillips does. I can't wait for the community to see Vell Phillips, and I'm even more excited for the community to see Menominee because these are real game changers in our community. I'm very excited. All right. If there is nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. So Carlin and Salaji.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Currents?
Aye.
That was amazing.